We'll just test the audio system.
One of those ones that randomly does it. Never have it figured it out.
We'll just test the audio system and see if we can... We'll just, we'll just test the audio system and see.
Thank you.
Okay.
Working now.
This is a test of the audio system.
All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 7:00 PM. We'll call to order this meeting of the town council. And for the last 18 months, I've waited for this day. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with a rating of justice for
Thank you. We'll call to order this meeting of the council and the first item of business is approval of the minutes of July 20th.
Motion approved. The July 20th, 2021 town council meeting as written.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All in favor. July 22nd minute.
Same motion for July 22nd, 2021 town council meeting.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? I'll ask for a vote on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The next item of business is announcements. Saturday, day after tomorrow, at 9 o'clock, is the 60th Annual Summer Fair and the 40th Annual Road Race and the first annual and, well, I don't know that it'll be annual, the dedication of the gym to David McGregor. And that's happening at 5:00 PM.
And also the soccer games, third annual soccer games.
And the third annual soccer tournament games and so if you're, if you're in town, be there. That's where you need to be. The other announcement I have is a matter for unanimous consent. We've received from the police chief after the agenda was published, a request to use Adamsville Baseball Field to start a Special Olympic Walkathon. This request requires action prior to our next meeting. If there is no objection, we will assign the matter to the recreation liaison, counselor McHugh, and the town administrator.
So moved.
I don't need a motion. I just need an objection. Hearing no objection, the matter is so assigned. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
The next, are there any other announcements?
Just that it's good to be back.
Yeah.
And slot in the flag again.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Next are the department head reports that is the clerk, police chief, building official, fire chief, assessor, administrator, and finance director.
Motion approved. All department head reports as written.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve department head reports and place them on file.
I had one correction of the town administrator. He had, it's my son and the town administrator and other gentlemen that are on the aquaculture committee. He had my nephew instead of my son Gary Jr. And that has been corrected. I just wanted the minutes to reflect that.
Thank you. Are there any other comments before accepting and placing them on file? Administrator.
No problem. I just wanted it to, so the minutes don't...
Thank you.
That'd be corrected.
I'll call for a vote on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next is old business. Received letters of interest from residents wishing to fill the vacancy of alternate member of the zoning board of review and to set a date for their interview. We have two such applicants, Nadine Flowers and Jonathan Bappett.
Would you like to do it before the next council meeting?
Yes.
15 minutes each?
That should be certainly, again, this is the alternate for the zoning board.
Start at 6:15. We'll go to quarter of seven, then I'll give us time to break and get back into the town council meeting.
So the proposal is that we do that on the...
19th?
19th of August at 6:15, prior to the council meeting.
Second.
That's the, that's the motion and its second. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All voting in favor. Thank you. And thank you to the two residents who are willing to serve. The next item of business is a draft proposal to amend Chapter 8 of the Little Compton Town Code. This involves transfer station fees and regulations for the council to consider. And you have in your packet a marked up version of Chapter 8-15, which is rules and regulations of the tran, sorry, 8-15. Rules and regulations in 8-16, the fee schedule. Questions on that? Is there a number on here? $30, I see there? For a sticker?
25 for a sticker.
25?
Yep.
Right. It's very small, very small.
It's on your second page of it, under...
Fee schedule.
8.16A?
Yep. Yep, 25.
Just for discussion, do you think $25 is enough? I mean, the fees, tipping fees, the disposal fees are going up. I don't think $50 is too much to pay so that we don't have to put it to the taxpayers. And people that use the transfer station, if they go 25 times a year, it's only $2 a time. So, I mean, it's open for discussion. If you want to keep it at 25, so be it.
I guess my question is, what's the intent of raising the sticker fee?
I think the intent, well, I can let the DPW director answer that.
The director and the town administrator and the clerk board these issues. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I have a question.
Yeah, what's the intent behind raising the fee for the sticker?
So the intent was, the whole thing started about construction debris. And then when we had the meeting with the council, we addressed several other, so then they asked us to come over and add it. And there needs to be a value maybe put on that and we need to recover some of the costs that were expended from there. And the council can change it if they don't like it, but that was what the council at the meeting recommended was $25 for that sticker. I never recommended to raise that. I would have wanted to solve the construction debris. But now that we discussed it, it makes sense to be $25. Also, a lot of money goes up every year and we need to put a little more value on the right to draw trash away in the cycle. I think it would be of my help to certify the council.
To say it another way, we initially established the sticker as an annual sticker and assigned a value of $5, which some people said, well, that's crazy. How, $5? How is that going to pay for? And we pointed out that we still ask for a substantial allocation of the town's revenue through the financial town meeting process. And the nominal value is simply to require people to come in so that they couldn't use their permanent Little Compton sticker that was present on the car they bought four years ago, which got the sticker 30 years before that and allowed a resident of another town to come and put trash in our, in our transfer station. So it is, I think, as the DPW says, the raising of the fee is not so that we can cover our costs. That doesn't even begin to cover our costs. Our costs are many hundreds of thousands of dollars in disposal fees. So what this does is kind of raises awareness that, oh my goodness, this is, this is a serious matter. Where if it's not the right number, we can, we can change it. And that's why it's being presented to us. Administrator?
I agree with the statement and I fully understand your question in terms of what do we need? Obviously, it's important to check. Last Saturday, I was there and interestingly enough, you know, to the point, close amount of fountains. I could not attest I worked on the place as they come in, but out of the 137 posts that I checked in the side of the morning, 7:05 did not.
Yeah, and I think, I think my, one of my concerns is making sure that it is enforced, which I know you've done a good job of helping, helping with down at the transfer station, making sure that everyone has a sticker when they go. Because it's not, you know, if we're going to raise the fee, it's not fair that some people are paying it and others squeak by without, without needing to. Because after, on Saturday, I saw a statement from a gentleman in town. He said, I've been going to the dump for 25 years without a sticker and suddenly someone stopped me and told me I needed a sticker. So I'm assuming...
They all got it.
Yeah. So I just want to make sure we're, we're driving that home, that everyone needs a sticker that goes to the dump, so.
It's not over yet.
Yeah.
It's still working, stages.
I just don't think $25 is unraising. They charge $2 a bag in dividends, so I mean, it will maybe lessen the amount of trash that goes there somehow if people recycle more.
Well, our purpose here is to send the proposers back with a, any direction that we need and a vote to schedule a public hearing so that we can bring the public in.
I think that, I think that's when everything will be sorted out, when the public comes and say, no, that's too much money, that's not enough money. And we, you know, this isn't set in stone. If there's a problem, we can always change it down the road.
Any other, Bill, any other changes here? Is he tires?
Tires would be a fee, dollars a week. We don't charge any money now, it's a box.
So $30 per tire, is that what I see here?
No.
Is it said?
It's whatever rider can, it's $5 a tire.
And then 8.16, I see the 25. And then I see a bunch of stuff deleted here.
So this is all based on trying to, we bring in too much construction debris into the transfer station, which pushes us over the cap, helps push us over the cap every year. And it's, it's too inexpensive. It's much more inexpensive to bring a trailer dumped in on construction debris than a dumpster on the job site. So we're pulling in way too much, that's what started all of it. So we're trying to limit how much construction debris we bring in. That was the goal. And then we started addressing some of the other things.
So how are we going to change the construction debris?
So construction debris will be, if a homeowner wants to bring in construction debris from their home, it will be a $75 fee for a trailer or a pickup load. And we're not going to accept any more commercial construction debris, maybe a field or commercial in the meantime. If the council chooses. We're not in the business of hauling trash and it costs a lot of money to haul trash, you know? And this company is definitely, I don't know why we do it.
And so currently, what's little detail on that?
Currently, they come get a coupon from the clerk's office and they go dump it and it fills up in like two days. And that comes towards a cap on a yearly basis for how much trash you bring in. And council's trapped even though it's construction.
Right, goes to the same place.
Goes to the same place. They weigh, you know, they weigh all the trash. I mean, we could raise the fees on that if we want to be in the trash business and the construction debris business, we could raise the fees so we could make, make, cover our costs or not even be in that business. I don't know if that's really...
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. This proposal changes our service from being a full-service construction debris recipient to being we'll accept construction debris from a homeowner, but we won't accept it from a...
Contract.
Contractor.
So it would be a fee of $75 to a homeowner? If I listed correct.
Which is what they're charged now.
Yeah, that's not a change.
You know, a pickup loader or trailer, not a dual-wheeled dump on trailer full of stuff.
So if a homeowner has a, homeowner has a couple of trash cans of debris?
Or a pickup.
Or a pickup trailer, you know? That's $75 still?
That's for construction. That's for construction, wood and doing remodeling on your house. It's not for regular trash.
Right. So a couple of windows, three windows, $75.
Bill, the only question I have on that, it says debris received from residents non-commercial in vehicle with a carrying capacity of less than 2,000 pounds. I don't think there's any pickup trucks that...
Well, that would be a, that was not a grocery, but a, that's a one-ton truck.
Yeah. Would it be appropriate to put pickup truck in there?
We could.
Instead of...
No, because it's also a trailer.
In pounds.
Yeah, what?
The carrying capacity of less than 2,000 pounds covers a 10,000...
GVW.
GVW.
Okay.
So, I mean, we could, we could say without, with a 10,000 GVW if you wanted, but this is, that carrying capacity of less than 2,000 is what we add in our ordinance anyways.
Right. But a, but a 10,000 GVW truck now can carry 4,000 pounds. So, I mean, the weight of these trucks these days, they call a three-quarter ton, which is a pickup truck supposedly carries 1,500 pounds, but they actually carry 3,000, something 5,500, so.
Well, then we leave it this way so that you make sure that you've got somebody that's not bringing in heavy loads. The whole intent is to eliminate the commercial trips.
Right. I understand that, right.
Not to do anything to harm the resident.
Right.
Because the resident is used to having to pay this fee. It's, it's an existing fee to residents now.
Okay.
Just got one final question.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's in here or not, I don't remember the whole thing, but if you get your sticker, if you do, you do $25 sticker, obviously he comes to the town hall and get it. You can get it through mail?
Mm-hmm.
How do you get it, how do you get it through mail?
They have to provide us with a copy of their registration and proof of their residency here. If they rent, they need a copy of the lease. If they own, then we need a copy of their tax.
So they're going to come in? They're going to get, they're going to come in?
No, they can do that through the mail.
Through the mail.
People have been doing it through the mail for years.
So through the mail, you can come in?
Or you can use a Dropbox.
Or you can use a Dropbox. Is there any other consideration, any, anywhere else to get that sticker? Get this document, I mean?
No.
Okay. That's all.
Yes, sir.
On my way to the transfer station, I pay attention to how many cars actually got stickers in the transfer station. I'd say that eight on 10 do not have them. What cost that go in and out there do not have stickers. Capacity of, you already said, they already checked out my letter, I don't know if I can still do this anymore. It's the point of our, our rule, you know, to beat out the stickers. When we're not enforcing it, I see passengers in place. I see people that go on show, that are confident, like this, this transfer station. And it really, maybe happen a police car there for a short period of time, just to enforce it in a certain way who don't have a transfer station. Maybe they have a learner so they can correct this.
I'll ask the administrator to speak to that since he has done just that.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, you didn't come by last Saturday. I was there myself at the gate checking people in, you know, so I'm aware of what you're talking about while I'm back again. And we will be addressing that. The problem, the problem is enforcement. It's really the chief's crew's job to do any kind of, I don't say physical, but no, go away, can't come dump stickers.
Pushes.
We're putting the DPW guys in a harmful, awkward position of saying, you know, I'm dealing with some high-rate people coming in and it's, it's not fair to those guys. Because one, one gentleman, one of the workers thought he was going to get fired and told somebody to leave with the sticker of the guys in on him, turn you in, and on him. Enforcement is going to be the issue and I think that's something we have to work on. Sure. Yes. No, I intend to address that. That's the reason why I'm there personally, to observe firsthand, you know, the operation. And I intend to get back there a couple more times and then I need to meet with the workers. I think consistency is one and, you know, right across the board and everybody doing the same thing, you know, and consistent. If we can get that, I mean, in the, out of the 237 folks that I, that I came across, I only dealt with one that really challenged me. Aside from that, you know, everybody was there. And it's all about the approach, so, you know, I will be discussing that with Bill and once I finish going back there at least two more times to observe it. But I think it can be done, I mean, you know, to the point of enforcement. I would not have had a problem at all saying, sorry, no sticker. And I did make that statement to the folks who did not have a sticker that says, if you do not get one and I'm back here at this gate, I'm going to turn you around, there will be no dumping. And they, they did not do anything, you know? They just said, I'll get a sticker. And rightfully, today on Monday, we actually had about 50 plus...
52.
52 people that showed up on Monday to get this sticker and even throughout the week, we had quite a few others.
We've probably done about 90 stickers this week.
I just got a couple of quick questions. Do we really think that people from other towns are dumping, using our dump?
I don't think so, except for maybe some past residents that might know people here, but I would think it's embarrassing.
And secondly, the gentleman spoke about out of state places. Obviously, in the summer, there's people that live here that are from out of state and they bring their cars in. I wouldn't be surprised because a lot of out of state places in the winter, in the fall, I don't know if you've seen that.
If you own property here, you can get a sticker, so it doesn't matter whether your car is registered.
Right.
So I don't think that we really have, it doesn't seem that we have people from out of town dumping their trash here. But you kind of say it's a small percentage.
But to your question, what I did, to the folks who did not have a sticker, I did tell them, I will be writing the plate down and I have, I did, and I'll be checking with the chief, I'll ask his assistants to run the plates, to see if we have come across any out of towns.
Great. Good job, Tony.
So I'd entertain a motion to schedule, subject to any other comments, to schedule a public hearing for our next meeting for the consideration of this amendment to the...
For the next year. I'll, I'll move this in at the public hearing, but we do have interviews ahead of it, too.
The interviews will be done by your regularly scheduled meeting.
Is this the version that we'll, we'll post for the public meeting?
That's your question.
Yeah.
Right.
It can change the public meeting.
Okay. We can change it.
You can change it in the public.
Oh, and then it'll be hearing.
But this version...
No, if it's changed in the public hearing after it's been reviewed.
Right. Well, a public hearing and everybody can comment on it. We'll massage it however it needs to be, then we'll vote on whatever we come up with, what everybody agrees to.
No, but the opposite.
My question is, do we want to put this out into the public with the $50 ticket?
Right.
The sticker fee, or do we want to keep it as 25? Is our intent?
That's the question. If there is a motion to present this as written, I'd entertain that. If we wish to make changes to it, let's vote on those changes and make them and then vote on.
Not, not to be sarcastic, but I think $50 would be sticker shock. I think the people who want 50 bucks to go to the dump that are already paying more, I mean...
All right, let it go as it is.
I just, I'm just apprehensive. If we say 25 and we get the audience here and says, no, it's ridiculous, it should be 50, then okay, but I don't think we should have presented it as the high number first.
And if the main intent of this was to, you know, kind of curb the, the construction debris, I think this, what's in here addresses that and we'll...
It does.
We'll make it so we don't hit the cap as soon as we have been, so I think 25 is okay.
Construction debris, that's, that's burdened so bad on the recycle rate, too. Because all that tonnage is going against our recycling.
It's basically a numerator and denominator question. Our numerator is how much we recycle. We've been working on people to try to change the numerator. We're now trying to change the denominator by saying, what are we dividing by? Total trash disposed. And the area that we think we can make the difference is by saying to the construction debris dumper, you can't bring it here. You can put things, the attendant can tell somebody with a, a long piece of plywood or something, take that up to the construction debris. We're not limiting that possibility. What we're trying to do is lower total overall solid waste so that we can drive down the solid waste number while we're eking up the recycle number to try to get our, our ratio out of the low 20s and into the mid 30s percent.
So I look this as, as written for the public hearing.
Second.
So the motion is made and seconded to propose this version at the public hearing. And that public hearing would be scheduled two weeks from the C room as part of the next meeting. Any further discussion? Yes, ma'am?
Just in case I can't make the public meeting, but is there an option for elderly or fixed income people that if you raise it to $50 or even to 25, that they can have a reduction in order to somehow? But I'm just thinking like a, a single elderly person, just income going from $5 to $50, I know that's not the proposal right now, could, could, they might not be able to fit that into their budget at the moment. Maybe they can, you know, in the next few months or whatever. I heard that Tyra and I, with their bags, had some kind of low in option for people. I didn't know if we had any of that here.
We do not because of the nominal nature of the, of $5. If, if raising that to 25 were to impose such a thing, I, I would say we would, we don't have a provision in our ordinance to say it can be forgiven, but a person could petition the council to be given a sticker for a lower price and we could deal with that as an individual item. Thank you. Any other questions? We'll vote then on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And thanks for the participation. It was very helpful to our process. The next item is a request from the Little Compton Prevention Coalition to use Veterans Field on September 27th of this year for a national dinner night from approximately 5:30 to 8:30 PM.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded. Ma'am, do you have any comment on that?
Um, training trip that approved, it had great turnout and we wanted to know how important family dinners are, so we provide three dinners for families that sign up ahead of time. Um, we share people there, it's really a buffet, but it's fun for all.
Great. Thank you. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks. The next is a letter from the police chief announcing the completion of 10 years of exemplary service by Officer Caitlin Farrar and her acceptance of the honorary rank of corporal within the Little Compton Police Department.
Congratulations to Caitlin.
It's been 10 years already. Wow.
May I have a motion to approve this announcement and to thank Corporal Caitlin Farrar for her 10 years of service?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. There's a further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks. The next is a scope of services provided by the Beta Group for services on the roadway rehabilitation measures from Maple Avenue and a short section of Long Highway immediately south of the intersection of Peckham Road. This scope was secured by the town administrator and the town administrator is intending to notify each resident once the details of this project have been set. Basically, we're going to tell each, each resident personally via notification of when and the impact on their, on their particular property. Questions on that? Do you need approval for the scope?
Yes, well, not for the scope, but we'll be authorized when we sign our proposal.
So I would solicit a motion from the council to authorize the town administrator to sign this proposal engaging Beta Group as our highway managers for this, for this project.
What exactly are they going to do here, Tony?
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second, thank you. Yes, sir, go ahead.
I was just... I was just asking, Tony, exactly what their service is going to entail. I mean, I'm reading it, but it's...
They will be writing the RFP, assist the selection on the screen of the contractors once you get a response. Screen and select, you know, assist us with the selection of the company and then they'll oversee the construction of the road, of the pavement, I should say. These are the ones that do the co-op work and they tell you what they're best at, or what they need.
Those are done, many of them are done. They'll be doing backups. But that's how they determine which sections of Maple Avenue will, in their estimation, require which kind of recovery. And so we're approaching this somewhat differently than we have in the past in the sense that we have a very comprehensive look at the whole road and an effort to try to say, "One size fits all," laying down a certain amount of asphalt is not the way we are. Rather, we'll try to correct individual problems. We have, for example, some areas where swales need to be reinforced so as to carry water along Maple Avenue further rather than allowing it to flow across Maple Avenue and onto properties on the eastern side. So it's an engineering look. The other thing that they do is they will be responsible for all the intersections of all the driveways and with the roadwork so that where necessary, driveways and/or areas that require paving that are not part of what is now the road surface will be discussed with the homeowner and a decision as to, "All right, what are you going to do with your driveway? Are you going to change it?" Those sorts of things. So it's a much more comprehensive look of the project.
So, I understand what's going on here, but I think the question I've been most asked in the past month and a half is, "Is there a plan to pave the roads that need paving in this town? And can I see that plan? Where is that plan?" And the second thing is, people ask me, "Is it a state road or is it a town road?" I don't know if it's a state road or a town road, okay? I don't know.
Beta Group can answer, we can answer that question from what they've done for a town road.
But what I'm saying, can a constituent come into town and say, "Well, here's the plan to pave the roads in Little Compton. Here's the plan." Oh, I see, I belong on this road. This is what they're going to do it for. That's a state road, that's not half a banana. Can someone from the public grab that?
You've just complicated the question, but if the question were, "I live on a town road," yes, they can. They can look at the projected date on which their road is going to be done. The state has the same opportunity and we have the same ability to show it to them. The problem is that we have historically said South of Commons is going to be repaired in 2018, 2020, 2022, 2024, and those continue to move out because of state funding from the Federal Department of Transportation that they don't receive and therefore move priorities around. We've had a great deal of success with our legislative folks, particularly Senator Lou DePalma, who has been instrumental in getting, for example, Meeting House, Snell Road and...
You've got that Secana Point.
And the Secana Point Sewall, which is an emergent problem. The reality is, to your question, those who live on the state roads continue to be frustrated by the fact that we don't have control over saying, "This is how much we're going to invest in our roads and this is how often we're going to do it." But yes, a person, again, can come in and ask that question and we can show them what it is, what the answer is. If you're talking about East Main Road, for example, or Simmons Road, the number is 2024. And that's the fourth iteration of that number. So I can't do anything or we can't do anything about the fact that the state might move that date in deference to, say, Lincoln or Smithfield or somebody else.
I think, you know, we're going to, we paid for this, Task Three, the biggest item here in the budget, but I think Task Three, the construction services, that's a great, that has a great value. It's worth having someone on the job that has engineering background to get the job done right. And a lot of paving projects don't always have this sort of person on the job. So I think it's worth having them there so we get it done and it lasts a long time.
Our scoping out of the reputation of this particular group resulted in a conclusion that said, "That's what this group is known to do." And their interaction with us, the senior vice president who came to speak with us just a couple of days ago, exempted by that. He knew what he was talking about, he looked, he scoped the job, he knew what the details were, and he was able to talk now. Yes, sir?
I just wanted to add, what you had said was very accurate. Beta did do our five-year plan for our town road. We hired them for that last year. That's why we're taking this forward to be in lab. Also, to Pat's other question, generally speaking, if the road has a single line, it's a town road. If the road has a double line, it's a state road. It's general because there is a couple of exceptions, but not many. So that's my answer for you.
I'll test your knowledge. What are the exceptions?
The connector of Long Highway between Ottesville and Peckham, that's a town road that has a double line.
Very good.
Thanks, sir.
It's about a split, even split, right? 2020?
About 20 miles each.
State has 20, we have 20.
I believe there's a map in the council office that has the different highlighted state person.
It is a matter of virtually constant questions to your point, and the answers, we believe, are beginning to coalesce around a plan that gets half the roads in town on a schedule that we can say with some confidence, "This is when it's going to happen." The next objective is to make that happen for the state side. And there's an opportunity with the American Rescue Fund to influence the state to accelerate some of those state roads in our towns, we hope to do.
So it sounds like it comes down to really have to go on state legislator, these legislators to go find for our roads down here.
I would say we've got the right one. The Department of Transportation, when they installed in the middle of Sunday night a set of rumble strips on West Road, about two weeks later, they were out there taking them off there for one reason. And that reason is Senator Lou DePalma said, "My constituents don't want rumble strips on West Main Road." And that made it happen.
He needs to say they want roads paved too, right? He needs to say that.
He does.
He does.
He does.
Yep. The Ottesville crosswalk, which is a source of very great concern, is directly attributable to his interest in getting people to make that happen. So we think we have the right person.
Now we gave you a chance.
We need to vote on the motion. There's going to be a heavy discussion after.
The motion then was to...
Automize the town administrator.
...for a town administrator to sign on behalf of the town. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item of business is a paddle pool administrator supporting a request by the police chief to replace an older vehicle with an administrative vehicle. $39,000 allocating funds from three sources, capital expenditure, FY21 encumbered police vehicle funds, and FY22 cruiser detail funds. So it's an excellent, this is an emergent problem, it's an excellent solution using three different sources of funding to be able to pull off an early replacement of the vehicle we expected to last.
Motion to approve the request.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Memorandum from myself requesting the town council approval and the fiscal year financial action. Just by way of memo, this is one of the functions that I intend that the finance director be the originator of. I'm doing it at this point because I'm knowledgeable about it and I'm the person to which you can address questions, but I expect the administrator and the finance director will be the folks who do this in the future. This is similar to what we did last year. Basic deal, there's $91,000 in the contingency account and with no surprise, it is the fire department whose requirement is the largest. And the reason for that is the massive outflow from there based on several personnel injuries in company with significant overtime for vaccination and other pods that they were responsible for. The others, the one special fund is using the housing trust set aside to pay for housing trust fees of $275 or other nominal fee. There's some interdepartmental transfers which are committed by the charter and those are listed in Section 3. Three items to encumber for office equipment, vehicle purchase, and road repair. And then finally, the transfer of funds that are remaining into two reserves or two funds that continue. One is the legal reserve, which is insurance against future legal expenses, and the second is the capital program, which we take each dollar that isn't spent this year and move into next year's capital.
Motion to approve is ready.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
What? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, we're just approving what we already, partially what we already approved from the prison, right? That's not a duplication. That's the same 14 grand from the police reserve.
That's the...
Yes, that's the incumbent funds. 1585.
Chief's intention, yes, sir.
So the legal reserve fund is a council-established fund?
Yes.
When was that created? You know, or is it...
I don't know.
Been in existence for a number of...
Decades.
Okay, all right.
Indemnification fund.
It used to be called indemnification.
It started around 1980. We had to put $10,000 a year in it because we were concerned about individual identity of council members or any corporation, especially nonprofit corporations, and that's a fund. And that's wonderful. And it meant to... But in that, they're often, they're going through a little bit of business to pay for.
Is there a line item in the budget for indemnification that we contribute towards every year or...
Other than the insurance that we have through the trust.
Oh, I see.
That applies to all of us and all of the officers and leadership of the town.
I think I'm just not used to it being called the legal reserve.
Okay, so, yep. And I will, I'll show you where the specifics are. The motion then made and seconded. Any discussion? Evans, Paul and David?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item of business is a memorandum, is a request from the United Congressional Church News Town Landing August 29th presenting the beach service.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. A letter hand delivered by Jeff and Susan, reposing to all members of the council and all members of the Beach Commission suggesting the beach become, quote, "For residents only." The chair of the Beach Commission is with us, as is the manager of the beach, and it is my proposal that, in keeping with the fact that the Beach Commission has first purview over this, that we refer the matter to them for their recommendation to us.
Second.
That's my motion. It's been seconded by councilor. Any discussion?
Yeah, discussion, aye. I've read the 1939 state law creating the Beach Commission. It was a short read and I read the charter on the town council and our responsibilities. And I've read Section 704 of the town charter for the Beach Commission. And I can't say I have clarity on it. I don't know if anyone in this building has clarity on it. I don't, I'm not afraid to say that. I'm hoping that the solicitor can give me some clarity. So the question that the reposing has is about residents only. I don't, in my mind, I don't think we can get to that discussion without figuring out exactly what the council and the Beach Commission's responsibilities are and what they can and can't do. Now, I know you just said you're going to pass it off to them because that's in their purview. Do you agree with that, solicitor? That's in their purview? Where would you see that in the charter or in the 1939 act? Where does it say that?
As soon as they use a quote in front of it, it says, "The town beach," it says, "Well, as the Commons," that's an interesting question. But there's this Commons, there's another Commons down between Buswood and South Shore, that's quite critical to the management of that cooperative place. And the South Shore, the Beach Commission was very, very careful with the nation conservancy of what's other neighbors. We were lawsuit in the 50s of the town office, the Council made out, many components, they say, buildings, the lion, which makes it sizable, and the commission makes it sizable. There were challenges, of course, to the Beach Commission, we have that program, most important was when they were installing a bridge in South Shore, over here, et cetera. And I believe, I write my own, the town council's seat, they said, "That's the way it is." And they had the expertise. And that case required an awful lot of firsthand expertise and also a lot of ability to have face-to-face conversations, not only the nation conservancy, when you say, "I'm a fantastic person," but now, if you didn't have time, or the town, I think the Beach Commission always facilitated issues. But in that case, also non-coastal, we did, she's there, the annual area of South Shore, which is, to sum up, the area, requires a long-standing relationship with the engineers and scientists that approach the resource. So that is something that, you know, on a local level, it's not a customer, it's about something. There's a lot of sophistication and I think that when we resolve issues about the nation conservancy, there's a lot of thought because of the hands-on efforts of the people.
So is it my understanding that the town reserves a right to recreational, kind of a little support that down at that district of the beach?
The Commons, these five, five, that is down, one, they are not to the center blocks, two, there's the, you can go across the bridge where they also take hearing on the hearing. There are two right numbers back to the west border. I think that's all. And then we hand the right to an upper part of the field. If you want, if you have a problem, you can start hearing about it like that. I think Bill has a reason to handle, because I think Bill was there when we had an 80s or 90s and the nation conservancy. So tell us what you want. We do it.
Yeah, right, so what I was going to say. So you're saying that this council has no, if they're going to discuss changing the beach to residents only, this council has no, we have no purview, we can do nothing about that?
No, I'm not saying that at all. A couple of things happened. The Beach Commission are elected, but they worked carefully with the town council in regards to the finances, which are sort of tricky. They spent a lot of money and the town always wanted to give it back to the town. The Beach Commission said, "Well, wait, we have to be able to run our facilities down." And it's a very healthy debate, a lot of respect there. And so in regards to the residents only, I think the town, as well as the town clerk and town administrator have a lot to say, so it wouldn't exclude the town council by any means. But we work together, so why not? If we have some experts, use them, have them come back and make their recommendation.
So I guess when you say exclude, I mean, you've got the town charter, you've got the 1939 state law. Is there anything in there exclude us? I mean, you're saying not to exclude this body. Is there anything in the law or in our charter that excludes us from saying that's a resident-only beach?
You can, you can, it's trusty to the town council, but I think the town council will be drawn to that. And I don't know, how will we come up with all sorts of...
And that's my question. How does it happen?
They'll have their meeting, I think, but also how will we do a traffic study? They'll call the chief to do, to use the traffic study, just done in the past couple of months. They're talking about traffic, talking about, things changed dramatically when access through was been blocked, or was shut down in that position. Now, all that traffic that used to go right through was been blocked on the beach, now that it's channeled onto South Shore. That had a huge impact on the town, perhaps unanticipated. But, so, the town council has to say, the town council, the town managers... town council, the town managers of the town, the town council should be elected in the twenty-something thirties at the town meeting. Sometimes they do, sometimes they do it right here. The town council has to say.
Well, I'm not understanding what you're suggesting we might do. Might we take for action the decision as to whether or not it was citizens or residents?
I guess what I'm asking is clarity on a legal standpoint, what nineteen-thirty-nine state law for any beach commissions is with this body, and how our town charter is written, and the beach commission is in the town charter. I mean, we're having a town charter now that they can change or add and steal, I don't know. But I, I don't think I'm getting, you know, I, I think we need to look at it, and I would totally attach you and say, is there anything in there specifically that gives us clear responsibility on things?
No, in my opinion, not, not really, not. They run the beaches, and they run the beaches. Not just, we're ready to run our beaches, bad, and that they run, let's call it, whatever that is.
So they'll decide what they want to do with this letter without making the town beach residents only?
Not no chance of it at all.
They'll make a recommendation back to us for our final approval, one way or the other. They don't have autonomy over it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I'm not clear. I mean, you're not clear, right? I'm not clear.
In my head, I'm clear. It's a, it's a beach commission decision.
But you're, but you just said that we have the ultimate say over what happens, don't you think?
It's a, it's a, well, maybe the town council wants to adopt an ordinance, they can adopt one. They can. So what we build and that's a given thing. So it's, it's a good process, it's not an adversary.
But my, my understanding about ordinance, it has to be an emergency for us to do ordinance down there for public safety. That's what I read in, in the charter.
Has to be an emergency.
Yeah, like, for us to make an ordinance, for public safety. That's my understanding. I think you said they're going to make an ordinance.
He means towards the beach.
Towards the beach, yeah.
Just not in general.
The beach relevant ordinances, are ordinances proposed and voted on by the town council?
I guess what I'm saying, in the state law and in our charter, if you, you agree, we could, we have, or the council has, we're willing to make an ordinance for public safety down there.
Yeah.
Like the gate, right?
Yeah.
They did the town, the Beach Commission to make that decision. We, I don't remember, but I think it was the council.
They don't have the authority to create an ordinance?
Right, that's what I was saying. They don't have the authority to do that. I think you also said that. But I find it confusing. I'm more than happy to try to de-confuse it. I'm not confused at all.
Well, this is a perfectly acceptable, if you want it to happen, to go, assume that there's a lot of information coming to the town council, the research. So they just create up their standards. Just, just segue into budget. What, I've been watching the beach since I've been old enough to remember it, which is way too long. Has it ever gone to the red? I can't remember, I tried. Maybe there's a hurricane or something. Go ahead.
No, and I've been on it over twenty years.
So the annual operating budget of the beach with the apartment operator and all that stuff like that, just a ballpark figure, I'm not asking for any absolutes, is, is what?
This current budget is two-hundred-and-fifty-five.
Two-hundred-and-fifty-five.
It's about a quarter of a million dollars in revenue, and about a quarter of a million dollars overall expenditures, much of which.
So it's net zero, net zero to the cost of the town, basically. We appropriate the funds, but then we get reimbursed from it. So that would be a direct, I'm just throwing out the forever's here. So that would be a direct quarter of a million increase to the town's budget, correct, if we prioritize the beach?
Assuming we didn't charge anyone from town.
Right.
Any, any fee, which we don't have.
Which we don't have. So that being said, we'd have to charge a fee and recruit some of the money, so.
Right. But they're aware of that, we're aware of that. So that's part of the deliberation that says, to what extent do we want to acknowledge or concur with the reposers' position that we should make it residents only, that is, no one else, no paying customers, I'll say it that way, if that's not a trivialization of it. And so I think that would be a back-and-forth that would occur. Suppose the Beach Commission were to look at this and say, you know, that makes sense to us, and we're gonna bring that forward. I think that is such a significant change. First of all, in my conversation with the, the Beach Commissions in the years I've been here, that has never been their position, that we ought to close the beach to other people who aren't from this town. But it doesn't mean it's not worthy of consideration.
I'm just wondering how that, what happens in that consideration? How does that, how does that work?
Well, I think the Beach Commission, who has the responsibility for preparing and submitting a budget, would need to be the first entity. It would be hardly appropriate for me to tell the police chief, "We've decided to change your budget next year, and it's gonna be happening as well." So it ought to come this way, not that way.
So it comes this, then, then where's it go? Then what happens?
Then, let's suppose that they proposed, for instance, that we do, as has been suggested. I think our first question would be, where does the revenue come then to operate the beach?
I don't know.
That's not our problem. Let the beach, I, I've never heard that kind of comment from them. So I don't think that's what they would bring forward. They'd bring forward a, a more considered answer. Right? I mean, do you have a, do you have a?
I was just, I have no proposal. I'm just wondering how the mechanics work on a question from a constituent, that's all.
In this particular case?
That's before.
Or suppose a constituent came forward and said, "I think you ought to change your zoning ordinances." We would say to the planning board and to the zoning board, "Give us your recommendation." In this case, it's a person saying, "Let's change the way we operate the beach." We would say to the Beach Commission, albeit they're an elected entity, which is a little bit different, "We didn't appoint them, they're elected by the people." So in that sense, they have a degree of independence. That's not true. We, we can replace people on the zoning board if we think they're not being appropriate in their response to us. But we can't replace people on the Beach Commission simply because we don't agree with their answer. Nonetheless, that would be from whom I think we should seek the first answer.
I agree.
I've got a question.
Yeah.
For, it's probably for Jim, but I don't know, you might know Bill. Do you keep track, do the attendants of the beach keep track of the number of town residents they have to turn away?
Again, not due to the time basis. And again, the current way it was set up, and the beach grid kept it running this year, I think addresses a lot of the resident issues. Residents and sticker holders are the only ones allowed on the beach till eight o'clock in the morning, and after four o'clock at night. So it gives them their beach and still gives them income. Again, some of those legal issues, of course, I didn't have time to research, but I also believe that if you take better funds for any of your other programs, you have to leave the assets of your town open to the public. So if you had made a, a town-only beach, you might lose school funds, you might lose police funds, that sort of thing, also. So this is money over, I think, so I'll try to look up some of the regulations from that, if I didn't have time.
Jim, I tested, when I was with the school committee on that exact question, the attorney there, and it has nothing to do with school funds, will never be affected by that. That's the answer I got? Not aware?
You can tell them.
Okay. So, I had a, we had a meeting, I had it on the agenda, and they explained it all. It's on tape somewhere, it's not here, but it doesn't affect the school.
And we had the same situation going about ten, fifteen years ago, where there was a group that wanted to turn to a resident-only beach, and a lot of, and Westport, Connecticut, where they almost lost five hundred dollars in school funds because they wanted to, to a resident-only beach. Again, the federal government basically said, hey, if you are taking money from us, you need to leave your assets of your town open to the public.
I get this, I had a different legal opinion on that, that's all. I don't know if the council has a legal opinion on it.
Again, I'm maybe telling you, the chief might know more about maybe not those rules and stuff like that. Unfortunately, I didn't have a chance to research that, that one.
Other than the fact that we accept federal funds, and we grant funding automatically to the elements of the public at large, period.
Yeah. But again, this might open up another whole other problem, you know, where we do both.
Rather than presume what the answer might be, I'm suggesting that we undertake a process to hear the recommendation, and then certainly to keep that if we feel that it's being.
Motion made seconded to get a recommendation from the Beach Commission?
Yes. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item of business is the letter from the Ag Trust announcing the rescheduling of AgriPass dedication originally planned for June last year to be held on September eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one, from two to five p.m. They're requesting any, they're requesting nothing in this particular letter. Is there, I would entertain a motion to place this matter on file.
Uh, just, um, I'll, I'll make that motion, but I think it should be placed on the bulletin board downstairs.
Yes.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to place on file on the bulletin board. Is any further discussion?
I just have, real quickly, what is the rules for the bulletin board down there? What do you put on there?
Depends on which one you're talking about.
Right down here.
I know. There's two. There's one that the public can put some stuff on if they have an announcement. And then there's the other one on the other wall that's only for business, uh, town business.
Oh, I didn't know that one.
Yes, there's two. And the one that's outside is only town meetings.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye. Thank you. The next item of business is a report, uh, sorry, a letter from the tax assessor sharing a new form with the council and asking for their concurrence in its use in the renewal of annual farmland designation as farm forests in open space. If you've had an opportunity to look at this, it appears to me to gather the information that she needs in order to do an assessment as to farmland designation, but I welcome any of your comments.
I look at it, I think it's great, because, not talking to gather information, but, you know, Denise, someone's gonna ask her, say, here's, here's the plan. You're not asking, of course, but this is what you can tell on that document.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion on that.
Yeah, I just had, and I spoke to Denise, 'cause I do have some considerable open-space land. She said this didn't, this was just for farms to prove that they were farming operations. I just didn't want to have to go to the state and say, okay, there's open space and whatever. She said that wasn't necessary for my particular situation. It's just for farmers.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Thank you. Thanks. The next is the, from the same assessor, the abatement list.
I looked over these abatement lists, and Denise is doing a good job explaining everything that, why these exemptions are coming to fruition. So I looked them over, they seem to be, like I say, self-explanatory, and I'll make the motion to approve, as written.
Second. This motion's made in seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next is a request from the Republican Town Committee to schedule the use of Veterans Field on June twelfth, twenty-twenty-two, available in two pieces.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then a copy of the proclamation adopted by the Warren Town Council in recognition of International Day of the World's Indigenous Peoples.
Motion to place on file.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The consent calendar.
Motion to place consent calendar on file unless anybody wants to discuss it.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And the payment bill.
Motion to pay the bills is written.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn. Before the council, I'll declare the meeting adjourned.